Okay, we're good.
And here's my. Where we are is that we were just waiting for Cotter to call us to give an order.
Excellent. So are we recording? Yeah. Excellent. Thank you. Okay. So it's a special meeting of GBOS on September 13th. Look at the section line easement for NSTAR and Project Anchorage. I will call the meeting to order at 11:32. I'm going to read some couple of statements and then ask one of my fellow supervisors to read the land use. She's among herself. I'll leave the lad acknowledgement, sorry. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors committees and subcommittees are subject to Alaska Open Meetings Act, as found Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. Would one of you two like to read the land acknowledgement?
I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
The Girdwood Board of Supervisors acknowledges the indigenous peoples of Alaska, the Tlingan, reside on the community of Girdwood situated between the areas known to be Denaina and Alutik. Homeland respects the people who were stewards of this land for generations. We commit to the continued stewardship of this land and are grateful to be part of a wider community that seeks to maintain a sustainable use of Girdwood Valley for present and future peoples.
Thank you very much. Right. I'll actually ask your staff to do the roll call. I think that's the way we should be doing it.
Okay. Mike Egerton?
Present.
Brian Burnett?
Present.
Jennifer Wingard?
Present.
Brianna Sullivan?
Here.
Okay, thank you. General revisions and approval. You remove motion to approve tonight's agenda or today's agenda?
Move to turn.
Okay.
Now, second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I think there were two seconds. So second and third. Any adjustments?
Yes. I got notified by one of the petitioners that it wouldn't be able to come for the first half hour. So I don't know how the board feels about it, but if we could move item number one to later in the agenda until his arrival, he would personally appreciate it.
Okay, I was actually gonna, I was gonna suggest an amendment to move two before one. So maybe that would work. Maybe we could do two, then three, then one.
Sure.
Okay. I will do this by assent. Is there anyone who's who objects to moving item three, uh, two first, then three, then one? So we move item one to the end. Not hearing any, seeing any objections. We'll do that by assent. Okay. So now we can move on to the agenda. We will start with item number two. Section line easement appeal behalf of GBSA. So which supervisor is is going to be the primary person on this? I have to have, we would have a, we have a supervisor generally who produce these things and sponsors them.
So I'm happy to do that in the running section.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to acknowledge first of all that I know that we all heard the presentations and discussions at LUC. I saw all members of GBOS at that meeting. So I'm not going to fully rehash everything that's said. The short version here is that this is a composed response to the NSTAR recent approval for NSTAR to go ahead and put in a second line that along their easement, which sort of triangulates the valley from the old Girdwood area over to a street over near the top of Temper Line. And I don't know if there's anything else that needs to be said beyond that. This is a lengthy packet that I know, as I said, that we've all seen before. So, yes.
So on the top of the printed packet, which I didn't do all 99 pages of. So yes, you're missing things from what is in the online packet. But what I put on top is the actual decision or the first couple of pages of it. And I really think that it would help GBOS to stay focused on what is at hand with looking at what the scope of the decision was. And so that's the the top of the packet. The scope of the decision is kind of three quarters of the way down. And basically it says that there, the state of Alaska DNR is determining whether or not this is an acceptable use of an easement. And that's all.
Thank you. So we're, so we're focused. We're going to try and get motions on the, on the table very quickly. Then we can, we can stay with the motion. So I would entertain a motion to to request that GBOS actually generates an appeal, makes an appeal against this decision. Or an appeal against DNR's decision for case of the case numbers.
Still move for discussion?
Thank you. So we have that moved by Brianna. We have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, so it's moved and seconded. So the motion in front of us is that GBOS, the service area, would would actually appeal this decision, would appeal the decision by DNR. Any comments from the board?
Question on, on the timing of the appeal and drafting of the appeal. Would, would we today just issue a, a statement and a $200 fee to, to ask to consider the repeal motion or consider the repeal?
I think, when was the deadline for the appeal?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. So we have a little bit of time to do a bit more than that, but not much more. We'd have to set the, we'd have to set the parameters of any work we're doing in this meeting. So I have a question for staff. Have you been able to research this? Is this even something we can do? Is this something we can spend taxpayer money on?
No.
Right. So I think to me that makes a fairly clear decision about whether we do the appeal or not. So I will, when we get to a vote, I will be voting no on GBOS may issuing mid. Any other questions from the questions or comments or thoughts from the board? Right.
Further, further thoughts in, you know, I have to admit, I'm not entirely opposed to seeing NSTAR be able to exercise their, their right to easement to provide a loop system into, into the valley. There are, there's, there's been a pretty good precedent set in past, in past projects of working with the Trails Committee to enhance trail infrastructure around where they have done work with the most recent being the the whole lower Iditarod alignment and the work, the utility work that was done in there. Allowed us to survey and as-built that entire system back in there. So there are some potential trail wins for the, for the valley and for future trail activity down through that part of the valley, whether it's the Danish Trail or the Virgin Creek Trail. There are opportunities I think that need to be considered.
Did you, did you have a comment?
Yeah. So in light of our original letter of objection about this project, I think back from a year ago, which might have more relevance for the agenda item number two, now three. I do wonder if it has any relevance on this or put another way, like, is there anything we can do? It just don't have the right to actually appeal to that. Is there any room left for discussion on this proposed?
So is that a, are you, are you going to? Oh, right. I think there probably are other options, but at the moment the motion is whether we.
Whether or not, right.
So we could, and perhaps when we finish making that decision, you could, you could offer another motion.
Well, actually, I was kind of hoping to hear from the original petitioner on this, if he had any ideas given the legal decision.
Well, I think we have that. So the original agenda item one, letter of support, we could potentially discuss that then. I think we'll get to that item. But if we're not actually doing the appeal ourselves, which is the, that's what item number two was, what we're currently considering.
I'm wondering if there are other aspects of this besides just legally whether or not, because under the original discussion on Monday, I thought the petition on this was open to some other options. And I'm just, I'm curious about that. I don't have a motion in mind at this point.
What I'm saying is perhaps that can come up later when, when they're here.
I'm talking about this.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were talking about Brendan. Okay, yeah, yeah. Do you, if you want any comments, I'll just open it to them.
I'm just happy. Thank you guys for taking it up and considering it. I think it's an important item for this community to look at. Especially looking at, you know, exploring options that GBOS and this community can take in the future when other DNR posts come up like this. So I'd be happy if the board wants to consider it from a legal perspective. I'm not a lawyer, but would be great if. I need to look at administrative code, but it depends on how the state defines a person and whether or not GBOS represents a community of people. And if that would count. I think if they step in the right direction, so this body wants to consider it, that's fantastic. If not, you know, it's something to keep in our toolbox of public document for anybody else who wishes to appeal this on a personal level at the date as well.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Any other comments from the, from the community? Or board members? Did you have something, Brianna?
Thank you, Mike. Really quick, thank you for your comments, everyone. And I would say that I will not be supporting this motion. I don't feel that it is entirely within our scope as GBOS in providing services to our area to make this. And it's also not possible in the way that we just said it, but the NSTAR is doing something that they had planned and it's an easement decision by DNR. So those are my initial thoughts.
Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing any other, other comments. So let's move to a vote. It's two bits by roll call.
Okay, Mike Egerton?
No.
Right, Ryan Burnett?
No.
Jennifer Wingard?
No.
Brianna Sullivan?
No.
Motion fails for zero four.
Okay, thank you. And do you want to, if we're not going to do any other motions on this, we'll move on to item, what was item number three. Determination of priority projects proposed to Project Anchorage. And again, do we have a supervisor who wants to lead this discussion?
Happy to do that since that's my antuse and since I, I agree.
Yes.
You didn't have to agree.
Oh, we say that, sorry. Your name was on it before. I don't mean the mess. I wasn't agreeing with the mess part.
I'll take two maybe.
Okay, the opportunity. Please go ahead.
Okay. In a nutshell, I have mentioned several times throughout the course of the summer that I thought that we, I wanted the community to be paying attention to Project Anchorage and I, I understand that the way that they have set up the submission of potential projects to be completed if a tax passes. I understand two things about this. One, we're at a whole lot of ifs right now. And two, that they set it up to be community members. And I made the case of land use, which again, I know everybody's heard already, that our situation in Girdwood might be a little different. I totally understand why they did not reach out to individual community councils not wanting to create kind of a turf war in Anchorage over people's pet projects. I think our considerations are a little different. And as always, we always have a concern about getting back some of what we're putting into the general coffers, some, some return of what we're putting into the general coffers. So I apologize for not realizing earlier that maybe we could have consolidated this and with at least looking at basically the, the frame on the top of the projects that have already been mostly vetted by the community or thoroughly vetted by individual committees. And in light of that, I think there is an argument to be made that we could consider this, especially in our new, with, with our whole collection of authorities and also given that we're the ones responsible for spending the taxpayer money that does come to us. I think that there's an argument to be made that we could, should submit what we see as being our community priorities. And so in light of that, I would propose, and I would make a motion that we consider, that, oh, sorry, excuse me. I make a motion that we put forward our own package of projects for consideration to Project Anchorage.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
Is there a second?
It wasn't a second. Thank you. That's, that's why we have two chairs. Okay, so is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you. So now I was going to hand you the chair and do it myself. Okay, so we have, we have the motion in front of us. It's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? We obviously have not identified the specific projects. This is the principle first of all.
I do have discussion.
Okay.
I've been trying to imagine exactly how to package this, but I think one possibility that came to mind was to package this specifically as a Girdwood parks and, well, I don't want to use parks and recs. It makes it seem like it falls in, but I was putting it as a Girdwood recreation package. And I would like, in accordance both with what LUC said and with the work that GHCC has already done, I would personally like the Girdwood RV Park to be at the top of that. And then within that, but within this idea of creating kind of a general recreation area, specifically interesting, creating a recreation area centralized here, right around us and making room for, or making facilities for pickleball, dog park, bathrooms, improvements on the skate park. I would like to see us turn this area into a centralized park district. But I believe that as part of creating Girdwood's, as part of expanding Girdwood's potential as a park destination and recreation destination for Anchorage, that we could also easily move in the Forest Loop Trail with that. I don't know that the roads and drainage projects falls within the scope of Project Anchorage, if I understand it. So I wouldn't eliminate that on our own. I'd be interested in the board's understanding of Project Anchorage. But my understanding is that Girdwood Cemetery and roads and drainage projects doesn't necessarily fall within that, but that's just me. So thank you for the chance to come. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Brian?
Thanks for that, that note of you, Jen. I, I really appreciate your, your vision for around here. Out of the, all of the places we have available to us here in Anchorage, this is a, excuse me, here in Girdwood for, for Girdwood and for Anchorage to come to, this is, this is the best that we have to offer. I, I, I heard from, from staff during the land use committee meeting, some, some concerns about as we, as we continue to add more and more amenities into our valley, more and more responsibilities to look after and, and upkeep the ability of our, of our staff to keep up with, with what can be built and. But I'm, I'm confident that we can figure out with, with, you know, volunteer groups and whatever. We've, we've always been able to work out for what we have to be in Girdwood. And in that, I would also, I would like to suggest that the Glacier Creek Suspension Bridge as, you know, as part of a, of a statewide project as far as in the traverse trail, the Alaska Long Trail, I think is, is something that, that would fit nicely into the package. Additionally, the suspension bridge is going to be turned over to the Forest Service once it is complete. And that will reduce any impacts on staff or managing. And the Forest Loop Trail will, will likely be able to be looked out for by the Girdwood or the. Let's, I'm here. Thank you.
Respond to this. Thank you for pointing that out. I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to not mention this suspension bridge. Thank you for putting that absolutely be part of it too. And I think that the long trail has a lot of potential to drive business and interest. And I think the long trail is very exciting about it. So I'd be happy to support that in whatever way. I also wanted to mention in terms of one of my motivations for doing this is I am a little uncomfortable with the way Project Anchorage kind of puts the onus for deciding what most wants as a decision within Project Anchorage. So at the very least, I think that there could be an argument made that GBOS putting a stamp on this does, does give it, I would hope, give the proposal a more weight.
Thank you. Margaret?
So my observation is that before some of those things could happen, the master plan effort needs to take place. One of the items that has been discussed maybe internally and, and not really comprehensively is the potential for like development of pocket parks within the community, which if our community does grow substantially, you know, having all of our recreation right here isn't necessarily as ideal as it's been. Which, you know, is part of why we have the soccer field in a different location. So anyway, I just think that this is a pretty broad topic and we've highlighted some specifics that are attractive, but I wouldn't want for us to be limited by scope right now in what could come up in that master planning effort. And I think it is a really important component to development of our, our next phase in recreation.
Tailing off of what Margaret said there, I would suggest that we look at Girdwood Parks' master planning efforts that would lead to the development of a Gird RV Park, Girdwood Cemetery, Pickleball and all those recreational activities there. So that we know that we have community buy-in on these improvements. And we have a guiding document from the community that helps us as we go through these master planning.
As in the last question I have.
So, so two thoughts just right at the top of the question. What is that? I, maybe I shouldn't have mentioned, like, yeah, I've imagined them here, but I actually, I think I just want pickleball courts. I don't actually care where they are. Just so we don't get confused. But also it is a growing sport and it'd be great that they have their space. So things like that. I'm, I'm not invested on, on where these things are, never would. But then Kyle, I'm not sure I understand your comment. Are you saying that you feel like we should have that before we put any requests from Andy forward?
I would probably say that, you know, we, we could go through each process and do a community outreach on each one and go through that process and, and then at some point get the master planning done. But the master planning has been an item on our capital list for a long time, which was going to lead us to developing individual projects out of that. Because then that way we know where the community wants them and where they should be. And then we can put our time and energy and money into making sure we're putting it in the right location. So I, I do think master planning effort should start actually this fall. So we may be ahead of it. But I do think a plan should be in place so that we can follow that as a guideline for developing all these resources and services.
Right.
Question for staff, please. I'm not sure on what the, what is the timeline on an Anchorage master plan for the parks plan? Has there been a rewrite in that recently that you know of? And any communities that have specific park plans?
Well, there is a ton of individual park plans, you know, each park has its own planning and, and, and they tend to do it you know, by park parcel or park area. And so, and then they do have a sort of overarching master planning document for Parks and Rec, but, but every time they get into it, and the way you think about Girdwood is Girdwood's like basically a neighborhood park in a way. We have two big, large park parcels that we work with, one being Girdwood Park here and then soccer fields up there. And so planning those out, we have no planning or guiding documents right now for either one of those. So in Anchorage, they have those and then they get into projects after that.
Just to follow up, am I right in thinking that the Anchorage Park Plan doesn't apply to Girdwood or Eagle River?
It does.
We have our own separate, Eagle River has its own plan.
Here has separate, yeah, two different, all different service areas. So.
Yeah. Okay, are there any, I want to give the opportunity, Brianna, did you have anything to say? Anything to comment?
Uh, yes, really quickly after Kyle and Margaret kind of, thank you, Mike, laid everyone's comment. Thank you. Put it out there in a bigger picture. I feel like this idea is fine and it doesn't hurt to send something to Project Anchorage from GBOS. And maybe it can be more broad and not numbered, but have this Parks and Recreation feel because that is why we are such a destination for a lot of Anchorage and the muni and visitors. So to us, all of these things fall in there, but Project Anchorage's idea is that they choose, I think. But we could give these suggestions. So because all of them are, have been going through so many years and financial work and approved approval, I think all of the ones that were said were fully valid. So if we want to have them listed but not numbered, would be comfortable with me. And then the title being Parks and Recreation Featured, I think would appeal to the people of Anchorage and visitors in Eagle River.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
And I'll add to this. And I don't want to stall anything. And I do think the RV Park is still a priority. And the RV Park actually would, I think, have its own master planning process to get it established. Because we're essentially creating a new park parcel by taking over the ownership of that and then developing that parcel out. It would have, have to have its own feasibility plan as a guiding document to lead designers into what they're going to do. And so we would have to go through a community process to say, okay, here's what, here's where it's going to be. Here's what it's going to look like. Do you like this? And then we get to something that is you know, a, a understanding of what it's going to be. And then we send it to designers and we go through the whole design process. So I do think that the RV Park and then the master planning, which leads to all these other small little things within our existing parks, which is pickleball and dog park and things like that. Those two efforts could work side by side as we move forward to make it happen. Because, because they, the RV Park will actually work independently from the rest of our park system because it'll be its own entity in the way it operates. So.
So what I'd like to do is bring us back to the motion that's in front of us, which is a yes, no on whether we do, whether we put forward a list, not the details of the list. Though we're talking a lot about the details of this, which is fine. Which I think presupposes we're going to say yes to the, whether we submit a list. But let's go back to the, to the motion. Any more comments on the, whether we should or shouldn't produce a list? If not, let's move to a vote on that item.
Sure. Mike Egerton?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yeah.
A motion passes four zero.
Right. Now we can get into the gory details of, of what we've put on there and how we get to doing this by the end of, by the end of Sunday. So I just have a couple of technical questions. Do we have, obviously for the cemetery, we have a full design. Everything's costed out. And for the suspension bridge, we do. What is, what is the status of the other projects? The RV Park, we have a, an estimate of what feasibility study would cost. So we at least have step one. What about the other smaller projects? Are there, has there been any work on that or would be?
We've done some initial stuff, but no, we haven't got into it because we wanted to start that master planning process first before we dove directly into that.
Okay. And Forest Loop Trail, is there a clear cost for that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I, I think I have a similar feeling to others that I think roads and drainage sits, they're important, but they probably sit outside. They're important, but they probably sit outside of the, of the scope of what Project Anchorage at least has asked for. I do not think the cemetery sits outside of that, though. I think the, what Project Anchorage is looking for is a sense of place. And the cemetery, as conceptually designed, is not just a place for remains and memories. It's also a place of sort of, where there's active, there's active recreation, there's an amphitheater, there's various other things there as well. So I think that does fall within sense of place. So I would suggest, I think RV Park at least feasibility and moving on to beyond that cemetery. I'm, Forest Loop, I do not think the suspension bridge is such a great fit. I think it is conceptually, but it's got so much funding attached to it already. I don't think it's going to be very attractive to Project Anchorage, which are looking for sort of nice, big shiny things, providing 7% of the funding or 3% of the funding or something to that project. It's already kind of gotten existence. So my suggestion would be to, to basically have the RV Park Cemetery park improvements, although I think we could argue that we should preempt this and go ahead anyway, doing a master plan independently of what we do for Project Anchorage and the Forest Loop Trail. So that would be my suggested list. And I'm not sure I have a priority between.
Yeah, it's getting quite hearing. Did you, are you including the Forest Loop Trail in that?
Yeah, so I would say, RV Park Cemetery, we should go ahead as a, as a service area and start the master planning process, but put in a budget for implementation of the things which come out of that, so Pickleball, Dog Parks, etc., and the Forest Loop Trail. So I would not include the master plan itself for parks, the suspension bridge and roads and drainage.
Yeah, I have a question about that.
Absolutely.
Can you talk a little, could I find out a little bit about where we are with the funding for the suspension bridge? I know you've presented on it numerous times. It's just not in my brain right, right at the moment.
We are right now probably, it'd be nice to have another 250,000, and we're going to work hard on that over the winter. I think by the time we, this, if this gets through the assembly and makes it onto a ballot and gets approved by the voters, I don't even know when it would actually go into effect. And we, we're hoping to build next year. So the suspension bridge might be done by the time that this even makes, becomes reality. So I would probably say it's not a priority through this project system or this idea, concept.
And any other comments from supervisors? Can I say one more thing? I can say one more thing, but, was that you, Brianna?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to raise my hand slash make a motion to, well, basically what your suggestions were, Mike, and put that into a motion for our list.
Okay, so our list would be, in no particular order, would be RV Park Cemetery, implementation of the park improvements that come out of the master plan and the Forest Loop Trail.
Correct.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Jennifer? I just want to say, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I just want to say one quick, one quick point to come up. I think the, I agree with the comments Kyle made about how long this could take. My sense is that as currently structured, this is going to struggle to get through the assembly. The sales taxes at 3%, two thirds of that money goes into property tax relief, which is generally a good idea to diversify our tax base. I think that's a good idea. I think the amount that goes, going into property tax relief has definitely got a lot of criticism from, from the assembly. The way that works in terms of regressiveness adds on top of the general regressiveness of a, of a sales tax. So I don't think that's going to be very successful. And I just don't see it being likely to pass in the time scale that's available, where this would have to be a ballot question with all the details ironed out by January. So I think this is good, this is a good exercise to go through. I think we should play the game that, you know, the game that effectively we've been given by Project Anchorage. I'm not sure I would rely on this funding coming through, even if we get selected by Project Anchorage. I wouldn't rely on this funding appearing within the next year or two, even if we get through the first phase. So that's just the context. Well, just.
No, no.
Please go ahead.
About it.
Joke.
And you had already said you wanted to say something. I appreciate your insights about the political realities of this. My feeling, and I also appreciate the board willingness to entertain it regardless and to take time with it, even if it's a exercise of futility. We don't, we don't know that for a fact, and just in case it isn't. But I also feel like it is a good exercise, as you just stated, to kind of think about our community priorities and what our community vision, and we have a lot of firms able to talk about kind of community, our own community vision. We're so busy fighting other people's sometimes community vision for us. This would really, would be really nice to put forward our community vision, even if this turns out to not be an environment that, which fully succeeds. But given that, I personally would like to see the RV Park prioritized, particularly because there's this, there's a component to that which allows some relief to the winter housing crisis. And I'm increasingly convinced, based on what I'm seeing, kind of socially and anecdotally, that it's the winter when our housing crisis is the worst. That's what I have to say.
I just wanted to observe that GBOS does have a capital improvements list, and it does include parks and rec items. And so, you know, some of these have evolved since that has been updated. And maybe some of them are still emerging, like when the property transfers, then we can talk more confidently about the RV Park, I think, rather than conceptually. But we should probably look and make sure that that capital improvement list is reflecting some of the trail's objectives that are being stated because I don't think that they are necessarily on as far as the Forest Loop Trail. We're still working forward on some projects as well with like the middle Iditarod and securing funding. So anyway, when you look at that list again, say Monday-ish, I think it would be a good idea to, to make sure that what we're talking about now matches and is updated.
Thank you. Actually, I was going to have one more thing. I forgot to say thank you, Jennifer, for bringing this to us. We should have been dealing with this. We did start the discussion and kind of dropped off. So thank you very much for bringing it in. Okay, I'm going to go out to the, I saw Crystal, actually, you typed a question. Do you want to just say it? Because we can't see the chat.
Yep, I, the question was, can you share the screen of what the list is so that people online can see the list?
Sorry.
Yeah. Sorry.
And, okay, so the proposal that I had previously put together and did a presentation on at Land use included several of these items. And so we're saying that we don't have, you guys are not proposing line item amounts that go with each of these items. Is that correct?
I don't think that is correct, Crystal. I think what we would be doing is, is giving an estimate, in some cases, we know what the cost is. And in other cases, we have, we have some sense of an estimated cost. So we would put, we would put an estimate, at least initial estimate, next to each of these. For the improvements around the park's master plan or coming out of the park's master plan, we may have just one number for the set of projects. But for the cemetery, we know, the RV Park, I think we at least have a phase one estimate. And for Forest Loop, we have a number. So we would put.
I just want to confirm, is, phase one estimate for the cemetery is 5 million, is that right?
I believe so, yeah. I think that was the last number I saw.
Okay, sounds good. I guess I just want to be super transparent that it's likely that I'll be submitting a proposal that includes Gerwood Arts as well as recreation assets. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, of course, anyone, anybody can submit to this list. We're just, we're just discussing what GBOS is going to do. Any other comments or discussions on this item, Jennifer?
I have a question about this, about what we were just stating about the, kind of the need to have a project estimate in mind because obviously that's going to be a bit of a trick in three days for all of this. And I do appreciate kind of what Margaret said. This is, there is a slightly different aspect of this, which is the fact of having it be the city money. So for example, we don't have RV Park on our priority burner right now for the community because it's not our land. We're not going to put it there until it's underneath our purview, right? So we were, we've been holding off on making that a budget priority because it doesn't make any sense to improve HLB land if they're not going to transfer it to us. If the city wants to improve it, I'm fine with that. So that's my personal feeling on that one. But also, because of the way Project Anchorage set this up, they set it up as something that citizens would put forward ideas for. So I'm not sure they're expecting citizens to have great budget estimates and all of that. So I guess I just don't want to see this, this idea stall because we don't have all of the financial specifics. Because I don't think that would be required of a citizen. So we're just putting our voice forward and representing, we hope, as much as possible the city, what Gerwood's been interested in and looking for.
I agree with you. I think we've just gone further than, because of the body we are, we've gone further than other people would have gone with these particular projects. So since we have, in most cases, estimate, we should provide them, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think it's mandatory. We have a motion in front of us, which is an unordered list. It's one, two, three, four items. Any further discussion from the board or community? Jennifer?
Sorry, I've been talking a lot. I'd like to propose an amendment and see if it gets seconded or improved or whatever. I'd like to propose an amendment that we prioritize the RV.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Seconded. Okay. Any other, before we, do you want to discuss that any further, or should we just vote on the amendment?
We can vote on the amendment.
Okay. Rock call.
Okay. Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Brian, Brianna Sullivan?
Yeah.
That amendment to the main motion passes four zero.
Okay. I'm not going to make an amendment, but I'm going to offer it to anybody else if they're interested in making an amendment. Because it's so far down the path, I would suggest that Gerwood Cemetery is probably an item number two if we're going to prioritize. If anyone wishes to make that amendment, they can. If not, I'm not going to push it. Not hearing anyone do that?
Brianna, I'll, I'll put it out there. I did a lot of work with the cemetery effort. It was on the bond last year. We should put it up there.
Okay, so we have an amendment. Do I get a sec? Is there a second?
Yes.
Yes. Right, seconded that. Any further discussion in this item? Hearing or seeing any, sorry.
Question, would, would getting it on this list preclude any future attempts to include the cemetery in some sort of bonding action or?
I don't think so. I think this would be in all of the, this would be in all of the above. Unless you think otherwise.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Means Anchorage is probably going to do the same thing. They're going to put projects on there they're probably going to eventually bond for, so.
Any further discussion? If not, then we will move to, move to a rock call vote.
Okay, Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yeah.
That amendment passes four zero.
Okay, so we have in front of us a motion to put forward four projects as a sort of package deal from Gerwood, not from Gerwood. Gerwood RV Park is one, Gerwood Cemetery is two, Gerwood Park Improvements, and Forest Loop Trail reappeals third. Any further discussion on the main motion, or we can move to a vote? Not seeing any further discussions. Let's move to a vote.
Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan? Main motion passes four zero.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Jennifer, for bringing this to, to ahead. I'm tempted to say that now means you have to do the work at root again to. Oh, thank you.
And that you don't want me to, but yeah.
I don't know, if you're prepared to. If you're prepared to, though, thank you so much. Okay, no more discussion on that item. We're now back to item number one, which is the, which is for GBOS to provide a letter of support for a proposed appeal to DNR's decision on section line easement for N-Star. By Brendan. I think it's a game for wonder, you'll win it. Jennifer, you could take this.
So this letter of support, oh, sorry, yeah, letter of support for the appeal of the section line easements. It, when this came up, this is all been under a pretty timeline. And so this is another situation in which we've had to circumvent the way we normally like to do things, but not because of us dropping off, just because of the nature of this process. And so when I was first approached about this, I mentioned that I thought it might fall, to some extent, under old business, and it matches with the letter objection that we have already written. So we've already taken a look at this project a little bit. But the part that's different is the part about the, that what they needed to, Margaret pointed out on the front page here about the scope of the decision limiting to determine if the requested item is an acceptable secondary use of the access easement. We're a little bit caught once again in process and the ways in which process gives or precisely often doesn't give us a say in kind of what happens. But this is them using their, their easements, the gas line. So I think what I'd like to do for the second discussion here is make a motion that we support this letter of opposition or, well, whether or not it turns into a resolution or a letter of opposition. I'll make the motion that we reiterate our objection based on aspects of that that are particular to the decision. In this case, our original letter of objection included things like objecting to the amount of public notice time, and that obviously doesn't.
Thank you. Margaret?
I'm looking for a restatement of your motion. Are you just, I guess, I can ask it as a question?
Give it a moment for the steam to clear.
I'm sorry. I hope I'm not making it steamy.
The green gears are.
That what you're trying to say is GBOS is moving to write a letter determined in support of the appeal that the Raymond Yocobians are pursuing.
Yes, let's hear that.
One thing I would point out, so if you're writing a letter of support, it doesn't have to be submitted, I don't think, at the same time as the appeal. You can do so as a support of the appeal. That might give us a little bit more time.
Okay.
Potentially. Although I don't think it would hurt if we had it ready for Monday.
Okay.
The other comments from the board?
Do we have a second?
Oh, sorry, we do not have a second. Thank you very much. I'm glad people are paying attention today. Do we have a second for the motion to write a letter in support of a potential appeal? I am not hearing a second. I think I will, I would like to second it since nobody else has. So can I just formally hand over the chair to Brianna for about 30 seconds?
I think so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I have something. I'd like to second the motion.
All right, the motion has been seconded. Now we can open it up for discussion. Go ahead. I can't see any hands.
Yeah, I'll just say briefly, I'm, I'm really stuck on this because I think the, we're, as Jennifer said, we're stuck in this, informally, what's been approved is something that, with one or two technical issues, especially the issue around the application claiming, doesn't involve hydrocarbons. The very narrow question of is this a legal use of a section line easement? I think we have to kind of, it kind of is. It's not, I don't think in the best interest of the community necessarily. It's not the worst thing, but it's definitely not, I think, the best thing. And I'm not convinced that N-Star has looked at alternatives. They've never told us they've looked at alternatives. We had no discussion. And I'm not convinced that N Star has looked at alternatives. They've never told us they've looked at alternatives. We had no discussion around that. They haven't come and spoken to us. So I still think some pressure is valuable. But I'm kind of still stuck on this very narrow question of whether the appeal itself, the appeal itself is the right way to do it, or whether we should just directly approach N Star and communicate with them directly about our objections. I'm just not sure. I'm really still stuck on this. Bit of both. So having said that, I think we should continue this discussion. So I'm going to stop talking and see if anyone else wants to speak on it.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else next?
Brendan's hand up.
Oh, thanks, Jennifer. And any board members before Brendan? If not, I was just going to add that N Star's intent, I believe, was to wait until the appeal process was finished and goes through D N R's process before they come back and have any, any changes or anything to update us with or update G B O S and therefore the community. So that is why, an idea perhaps from Mike's perspective that he said is to directly communicate with N Star instead of the route in front of us. Any other board members or then Brendan?
Well, I'd just like to say that we're not, we can do both. And we can both support the appeal and communicate directly with N Star. I think the latter is more likely to, is probably the right formal process. But that doesn't preclude us from, from supporting the appeal. I'm going to let you keep the chair. You should keep the chair for the rest of this item, Brianna.
Okay, so Brendan, go ahead, please.
Yeah, thanks very much. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you. Thanks, yeah. Thank you for taking this up and on short notice. I really appreciate it. And, and thank you to Jennifer for spearheading, bringing this up. And I appreciate Mike's comments and I think that they're, you know, from my perspective, I really like the comments that you're making. And I would, I think that there's value, obviously for us as well as just the community in general to some, some sort of statement on the record, whether it's a, you know, I leave it to your better judgment, whether it's a resolution or a letter that we as, you know, affected property owners and just in the community in general would be able to sort of point to and say, look, you know, G B O S reiterated its position regarding, reiterated its concerns regarding this. And I think that, as Mike was pointing out, that even sort of aside from the, you know, the technical issue of is this an allowable use, you know, of the, of the section line easement? And I think, you know, at least established by precedent, yes, at a general level it is. At the sort of technical level of whether or not this proposal would damage the primary use, which is trails and access and that issue. That's definitely a big concern we have. And I think that that. And then I think that other, more technical considerations as those we've raised in our, our letter that we submitted for this, this meeting are definitely germane here, as Mike also pointed out, for example, the problems with the application. And I think just also the sort of general statements that pertain to the community's interests in terms of this not really being aligned with the vision that the community has set out for this area, its potential to damage trails in there as well as damage the opportunities for future trails issues in there, which I think is a real possibility. I think one thing that we've all kind of learned through the P and Z process is that there are forces at work outside of Girdwood that have a much bigger say in these things than we do, unfortunately, in terms of our vision. And I am definitely concerned about this leading to future activities that could potentially cut off future trail opportunities in here, for example, widespread housing development. But I guess, I guess, long story short, it would be really great to sort of hear maybe objections along the, you know, some sort of form of statement along those lines that this is sort of not congruent with what the community is looking for, that there, you know, there's, we really haven't had engagement from N Star in the, in the year since, and we didn't have it at the beginning, at the outset, which is really disappointing. And, and just some of these other issues. I'm sorry, I'm a little scatter shot here. I'm trying to cover all the bases and I'm trying to be cognizant of your restricted time this afternoon. But, so please feel free to follow up with questions if I'm being unclear. But I think that that would really help, not just us and affected property owners, but just the community at large to have some sort of statement to that effect. And I, I think it, it sets a good tone for the record. Thank you.
Thanks, Brendan. And it wasn't that scattered, I think, with your emails and letters. It all pieces together. Any other comments from board members?
Brian, listen to me.
Thank you. I'm going to say again, I think I am not necessarily convinced that if this, if N Star was allowed to use their easement as, as it was intended, I don't know that it would necessarily damage the future use of, of this section of land and could quite possibly allow for future trail development in there, which would then more effectively protect the land there if there was a, a developed trailhead down there. If there was more developed and trails that had an easement down there. I think that that would protect the land as well as anything, if not even protecting it better than, than having a couple of primitive trails down there that don't have, that don't have an easement that they occupy. So I'm, I'm, again, I'm not convinced that, that if N Star uses that easement, that it is going to damage the future trail potential in that, in that parcel.
Thank you, Brian. More comments in the room?
Yeah.
No further, yeah, go for it.
Okay. I just want to kind of throw out an idea that, and see what the board thinks. I don't know how much precedence we have with this, but I wonder if instead of having a resolution or a formal letter of objection, if we could consider having basically a letter of interest or concern and just raise to both the approving agency and to N Star that we're interested in continued engagement. And that could be anything from wanting to work with findings and benefits to this, like Brian just mentioned. You know, actively asking for it, basically, not ashamed. To mentioning the, that we would like some clarification on hydrocarbon impacts on some awareness of the conflicts with the, our Girdwood Trails Management Plan, Girdwood Trails Master Plan, and pending Girdwood Compass Plan, even though I understand that this is not land that is specifically encompassed by that. It certainly will have impacts on the community's intent for that land. And then also raising the issue that, or raising the point that if we had more active community engagement, there might be a way in future or even now to figure out some win wins around a potential reroute, very similar to the one, say, for example, that Brett mentioned in his proposal.
Thanks, Jennifer. Would you be interested in changing your motion to what, kind of morph into what you just said? Or just discussion, putting it out there?
I was going to suggest we do this as an amendment so we don't lose the original motion.
Okay.
So I'll make a proposal. So I suggest an amendment that we write a, not a letter of, not a letter of support for the, it would not be a letter of support for the appeal, but we would write a letter of interest to N Star.
I'll second that.
Right. So it was seconded by Jennifer. So that's an amendment to our original motion.
Okay. We have amendment, an amendment to the original motion that sounds obviously related but kind of different. So anyone could vote differently, I suppose.
Margaret, Margaret is coming.
I have a question. Yeah, my question is, if this is a letter to N Star, then this is perhaps not part of the need to get something in by Sunday?
Right.
Okay.
Right, but the way the motion is currently stated, or the way my idea was, it's, we're still subject to, I think, getting something in. Because the letter was going to go to both agencies, we still, the deadline is split there unless we, unless the board decides otherwise.
I'm just looking for clarification.
I think if we, I think if we pass this amendment, then we're talking about a letter which is not part of the appeal process at all, not connected to the appeal process and separate. So I think you are correct. Then it would not necessarily have, would not have the same deadline. But we would still want to do it very soon.
Okay, thank you for all the clarification. Keep going if there's more in the room.
So Brianna, there is a hand up from Brendan.
Okay, quickly, Brendan? Can't hear you yet, Brendan.
Sorry, I dropped my hand instead of dropping the mic.
It's only been four years, Brendan.
Yeah, I know. No, I, thank you. Thanks for the, you know, it's very brief. I, I do think, I did want to address the trails issue and I appreciate the different perspectives on that. I, I do just want to reinforce that I think we need to be careful about unknowns here. And I think we do have some knowns here, which is that this would damage existing trails that we know about. And I think we have the known that, like, D N R does not seem to really understand trails in this, their decision. And we have the known that, you know, future development in this area could very well ruin all trail opportunities there. And I definitely don't want to bank on, you know, possible, the possibilities for this to assist with trails, for example. Potentially even at the expense of the broader area. I don't want that to be sort of a, a hope that we bank on when it's, it's, it's an unknown and we know other things definitely damaged trails that this, that this would entail damage to trails. That being said, I do appreciate G B O S wanting to continue to engage on this in whatever way they can, especially engaging N Star on the issue of alternative routing or, or even D N R on alternative routing. I think that that, that was a great component of what Bryce brought up at land use. I would hope that there could be some sort of statement in some capacity about G B O S, you know, not seeing this as congruent with what we've laid out in our, our plans and also not being happy with the engagement and not being happy with, you know, certain aspects of the application. I think that those are probably, you know, those are probably, well, to my mind, they're acceptable. I don't, I don't know about to your mind. But, but yeah, I just reiterate that again. And, and anything that, as an appellant here, anything that I can append to, to the appeal is also obviously helpful. So if in the end that only ends up being the land use approved resolution, so be it. But yeah, just wanted to throw that out there as well, just as a sort of thing for the future that I might be approaching staff for, I suppose. Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. Any other comments?
Move to a vote?
There are no more comments.
I would also just like to state that, you know, as, as we're considering alternate routes, eventually this project is going to dead end in someone's backyard. There is, there is no question. There will be, somebody's backyard is going to be impacted by this. The question is, who's?
Thank you.
I did have one further comment.
There's also a move to a vote.
Sorry, I did have one further comment as well, which isn't, it's not, it's related to this. It's not directly on the motion. But this does, this whole, this whole experience has brought up the question of the other section line easements throughout the valley. That in principle, pretty much any agency or individual, if they have a justification, can drive a fairly significant swath through many parts of the valley. It's just something we should be aware of. And if we're, if we're looking at reserving areas more than they are at the moment, is section line vacation is something we should perhaps consider at some point in the future for some areas. That was all. Otherwise, let's go to a vote.
Okay, thank you, Mike. And I really fast would like to add that this experience also then would set a precedent with whichever way we act or just learn from it, that the history and the future of land easements in the state of Alaska and utilities. But also that, that people in our community would be engaged and have the right and ability to appeal. Okay, I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the amendment.
I need clarification.
Yeah, the clarification is this is an amendment to write a, a letter expressing our disagreement with, talking to N Star and expressing our disagreement with our concerns about the proposals. Let's put it that way. Not a direct support of the appeal. That's what the amendment says.
And the main motion is a direct support of the appeal.
Right, but if this amendment passes, then it would be replaced by a, a letter to N Star showing our concerns with the project.
Okay.
Not be a, ought to be a bill.
Okay, so this isn't a main, this isn't an amendment to the main motion.
This is the amendment to the main motion.
Okay.
Which changes the, it changes the same motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Is it, sorry, process wise, profit margin? You think this is the best way to do it? Or should we just? I guess that's.
Otherwise, we'd have to vote down the, the, the first one. This way at least, what we, this vote is effectively deciding what we do. And then we say yes or no to the whole.
Okay.
So we've, I'll state it a different way. We're about to vote on amendments. If we say yes to the amendment, then the only thing we have in front of us is to write a letter to N Star expressing our concerns. If we vote no to this amendment, then we have a second vote of deciding whether to write a letter of support for the, for the appeal or not.
Okay. Brianna, you ready?
I think so.
All right, start with Brianna Sullivan?
No.
Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
No.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Motion, two, two, motion fails.
Okay.
Back to the main motion. May, we'll state that again for the record.
Sorry.
No problem.
The original motion was that T B O S supports writing a letter of, G B O S will write a letter of support for the appeal by the Raymond Yocobians.
Okay. So back to the main motion. And Brianna Sullivan?
No.
Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
No.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Vote is two, two, motion fails.
I'm going to just say thank you to everyone through, I feel that was a very good, a very good discussion.
Would you like to cheer back, Mike?
Yeah, okay, yep.
Great. Thank you, everyone, for dealing with me while I cheered.
So staff, I'm noting that you have two items on the agenda today that haven't gone exactly as was recommended by Land Use. And so I just want to remind you that there's a process for handling that.
Yeah, I think that's a co-chair's responsibility, so we will do that.
Okay.
We do not, I don't think we have time to, did the, yes, we have two items, about three, yes, sorry, understood. Okay, public comment. Person suffering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Does anyone want to make a public comment? I'm not seeing any. I'm not seeing any. I'm going to say one thing before we move to adjournment. It's actually a comment which Kyle made to me earlier today. There is a, I mentioned in the work sessions, this is about Monday's meeting. I mentioned in the work sessions, I'd bring forward an amendment for the budget and they are in the beating packet, so it might be worthwhile just looking at those and checking over them, the beating packet for Monday. We will now move on to. Hold on.
I haven't gotten it compiled yet in.
It will be.
Packet. So.
There were some technical problems.
When the revised packet comes out, that will be included.
Thank you. There were problems with the website today, remember?
Yeah.
That's the reason. Okay, we'll now move on to adjournment. Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you.